All right. Please, please join me in prayer. Our heavenly Father, we give thanks to you this day. We ask you to give us guidance, help us to know and to do your will. Let the decisions that we make be pleasing in your sight. Be with those who are in any kind of sorrow, need, sickness, or any kind of adversity. Be with those soldiers, sailors, and other servicemen and women who are serving to protect our nation overseas and here in this country. In your name we pray, amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome all of you tonight. We're glad to have you here. Some special recognitions that we're excited to present, but before we get to those, we're going to go on to Citizen Communication.
Yes, Mayor, we have three persons. The first one is Yolanda Lozoya, 225 Sandero East. Topic is cat and kitten spacing and neutering, and she wants to be called.
Amanda.
Yeah?
I'm Yolanda.
Oh, okay.
Do I go up?
Yeah, you can step up.
Oh, okay.
Mm-hmm.
My name is Yolanda Lozoya. I just want to thank you first for allowing me this opportunity. I'm going to try to be as quickly, tell you my, what I have to say here as quickly as possible. First and foremost, I want you to know that I did serve in the military. I served in the Marine Corps. I was on active duty for over 26 years. I'm not saying that to boast or anything like that. I'm just saying that because I saw a lot of different places. I'm a native of San Benito. I decided after 26 years that I'm going to go ahead and build my home here in Harlingen. Being that I have been all over the place, different countries, different cities, I have seen what their communities look like. And coming home, I was shocked to see the overpopulation of animals, cats, and dogs. And I'm just here as a voice for them, and really, honestly, I'm just pleading that the city do something about the overpopulation of the, of animals here in the city of Harlingen. And, you know, attention does need to be brought, that there is an overpopulation issue here in Harlingen. I don't know whether you know, but there are several colonies throughout the city, one specifically right across the street. I know that this Humane Society does exist, and they do a wonderful job, but, you know, they do not have a vet. And without them having a vet, no one can spay and neuter these animals. Eventually, after, you know, maybe we can maybe get a veterinarian here to work with the city, you know, maybe later on down the road, my, my vision is to hope and plead that maybe we can have something called a TNR program, a tap, you know, trap and release, trap the animals, have them fixed, and return them back to their community. Another thing that I needed to say, that even a responsible pet owner, they struggle with having their pet neutered. It's, it's a costly, it's a costly thing to have your pet neutered. It costs $150, and if that animal is pregnant, it's going to cost even more.
Okay, ma'am. Ma'am, you're, the, the time limit on these are two minutes, so we ask if you could wrap it up, okay?
Yes, I am. The private citizens have taken up this cause, and we're working in the, in the, in the background. We're trying to help out. And I'm just here, you know, just to ask to please, please, can the city go ahead and maybe try to employ a veterinarian and help out? Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much. Because this is a public comment, we don't, we can't really talk about it with you.
Oh, yes, no problem, sir.
All right. Thank you.
The next one, Mayor, is Israel Aguilar, 28, 136 Cook Lane. He wants to speak on items seven and nine, and wants to be called if he's not present. I don't know if he's present right now, but I don't see him. I don't know if he's downstairs, or...
Call Mr. Aguilar, Israel Aguilar, please.
Hello? Okay. Let me turn on. That's what I have to say.
Hello?
Hello, Mr. Aguilar. This is Amanda Lisondo with the City of Harlingen. You are, hi.
You call in Lozano, you call me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
That's all right. I'm here though.
Well, then, then, you want to take Ron Lozano now, Mayor?
Hmm.
He, he wanted to be called Mr. Lozano, Ron Lozano? Okay, well, he hung up. That's okay.
No, he's right.
We'll try it again. We'll try it again.
Amanda.
Oh, sweet. Okay. Ron Lozano?
I have items nine, ten, and twelve.
Okay. So I guess he wants to speak when those items are discussed.
All right, well, we're calling him. I don't know.
Okay, Mayor, then I'll try Israel Aguilar.
Oh, really? Yes. I was interviewed as a sheriff, just former, and I served in Iraq in the U.S. Army.
Hello?
Hi, hi, Mr. Aguilar. This is Amanda. You asked to speak under Citizens Communication, and you have two minutes, and this is on item seven and nine.
Correct, yes. Good evening. My name is Israel Aguilar, and I was calling in reference to the possible consideration for the agenda items on hiring or awarding a contract to the Limebarger and Samson Law Firm. And I would strongly urge the City Commission to not award it to that particular firm because of the simple fact that earlier this year, that firm was reported to be under investigation for some type of activity involving election fraud. And it, even in the local elections here, particularly the Bronzel Office, has awarded monetary assistance to political campaigns, school board members, and City Commission. And so, I, you know, I really think that any law firm that's going to be hired by any entity should be free of that type of activity, because we want to be sure and positive that our tax dollars are going to law firms that are apolitical, and certainly not mandating any elections. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. That's it, ma'am.
All right. Okay, thank you. That concludes Citizen Communication. So we're going to go to item one, which is the awards and recognitions and presentations. First one is to the Harlingen High School South Hawks Air Force JROTC, and recognition of their awards and competitions. So I see them in the back. If we can get you to come up front. Commissioner, do you want to present this?
Yeah.
I also talked to our... From Marines. Marines, it's all good.
Okay.
So, Monsieur Pettis here claims that he knows some of you. He sees you in school on occasion. So he's joining with the presentation. We want to recognize the, congratulate the Harlingen High School South Hawks Air Force JROTC for their outstanding performance at the RTB Skills Meet held in Edford, the Edinburgh North High School in Texas, Saturday, October 16, 2021, against 23 high schools in the valley. And they earned a first place in Military Uniform Inspection, exceptional scores in World History, Personal Health, and Military Questions. First place in Military Regulation Drill Marching. First place in Armed Color Guard Regulation Marching. First place in Unarmed Female Color Guard Regulation Marching. Second place, what happened to that guy? Best Cadet Commander for the Armed Drill Team. I'm sure that you were the best Cadet Commander, but... Third place, Exhibition Style Marching. First place, Best Drill Team Overall in the entire drill team, number one in the Rio Grande Valley, for their commitment and their outstanding accomplishments. The Armed Drill Team is Judy Rodriguez, Kilan Pettis, Madison Broderick, Samuel Nieto, Obed Johnston, Brad Britton, Shelley, Arin Secha, Frank Penantel, Keri, Keri Vazquez, and Eric Castillo. The Armed Drill Team Color Guard was Madison Broderick, Samuel Nieto, Obed Johnston, Eric Castillo. The unarmed drill team color guard, Aaron Perkins, Ashley Crespo, Haley Sigah, Zoraila Reyna, and Lauren Smith. And to Armando Cusco, Master Sergeant, U.S. Air Force Retired, MAN Department Head, and Air Force JROTC Senior Aerospace Science Instructor, and Technical Sergeant Antonio Lozano III, Aerospace Science Instructor at Harlingen High School. We recognize you for your determination, confidence in the Harlingen High School South Hawks Air Force JROTC for your, and the outstanding results that you earned last October. So congratulations to each and every one of you. Very impressive result, and we're, your city is very, very proud of you, and we're so glad that we could have you here and recognize you for the outstanding work that you all have done. So I want to congratulate your, your, your leaders and for the work they have done in getting you ready for all of these competitions. And I know it was tough, but you all did a fantastic job. Congratulations.
I just want to say on behalf of, here is the, you know, obviously on behalf of the city, we're very proud of you, but also on behalf of, as a teacher, from all the teachers at the South Administration, we're proud of you, and excellent job.
Thanks. All right. Congratulations.
There you go. Three, two, one.
I'm going to take my mask off, miss.
Two, one. So, thank you so much.
All right. Congratulations.
Awesome. Go Air Force. Go Air Force. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. The next recognition we have is the Harlingen High School North Cardinals Volleyball Team. So if you all want to come up here. All right. We want to recognize, this is a, this is also a very, very special recognition, and the City of Harlingen congratulates the Harlingen High School Cardinals Volleyball Team 2021, 2022, 32, 6A District Champions. Woo! Congratulations. By Gomez, Filianna Bryan, Davina Gutierrez, Valerie Salceda, Elena Roque, Juliana Paldez, Natalie Garcia, Cecilia Juarez, Isis Aranda, Amethyst Gutierrez, Elena Agundaga, Brianna Cabasos, Hayden Morales, Scout Medley Casey Guitao, for their great sportsmanship, dedication, and outstanding accomplishments to Joshua Torres, head coach, for your determination and confidence in the Harlingen High School Cardinals Volleyball Team, which brought down a commemorating victory. So congratulations, and that's, this is pretty good, but that's even better than that great team that you brought home. And I guess the volleyball, I guess the volleyball departments have bigger budgets, so congratulations to you guys. We're so proud of you, and I know that your folks are proud of you. We thank your teachers, we thank your families for supporting you and all of this. We know that they do a lot to make sure you get to practice and home to practice in every single one of those games. So congratulations to you all. Well done.
Thank you.
Good job, ladies. Excellent job. Congratulations.
Good job.
Good job. Good job. Good job. Awesome job, Coach. Good job.
All right. Next, we have a presentation by the Texas Department of Transportation regarding proposed improvements along Loop 499 and Business 77, the City of Harlingen.
Good afternoon. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to present a project that has been worked on by the Department of, Texas Department of Transportation. My name is Pete Alvarado. I am the Far District Engineer, representing the department here in the, in deep south Texas. The purpose of, of this project are raised medians, raised medians on Business 77 and Loop 499. The intent is to install raised medians to improve safety in this community. We have hired some consultants that have done preliminary work to determine the benefits of having raised medians installed in this area. The limits of the project are basically on Business 77, from Jefferson Street here in Harlingen, to FM 510 in San Benito, and Loop 499, from Interstate I-69E north to FM 106. We believe that this is an improvement in safety, regulating, if you will, access points and minimizing the number of potential conflict points. With me is Rex Cosley, my Deputy District Engineer, to make a brief presentation on some of the project specifics. Rex?
Thank you, Pete. Good evening, Mayor. I'm going to go ahead and try to advance some slides as we go. Again, as Mr. Alvarado has mentioned, this is very high level, and give you some graphics. So, Business 77 and State Loop 499, limits are shown above. So obviously, the, the first step is the Highway Safety Improvement Program. One stretch of Business 77 received funding in the amount of $650,000. Unfortunately, it was due to some suspected serious injury crashes and some other non-incapacity crashes. And that was through the segment period of 2015 to 2017. So although we have one roadway segment in Business 77, the district decided to take a, a grand look of the entire stretch of Business 77 and State Loop 499, as it met the need and purpose of, of, to improve safety. And this below graphic here is just the importance of what raised medians do. They reduce conflict points. So this is a large graphic here, but the project, in, in so many words, is, there's two terms, the short-term investment, as well as the long-term investment. And in so many words, the short-term investment is simply placing a raised median and providing an overlay over the entire roadway limits. And so this, on average, is about roughly a million dollars per mile. No additional right-of-way is needed on these short-term projects, other than a sliver along State Loop 499, near the Arroyo Colorado Bridge, just due to the limited right-of-way in that general area. And in so many words, the short-term project will address safety. The long-term project, it's more, more advanced. In other words, you're turning dirt. You're adding a lane on each side, you're acquiring right-of-way, and you address pedestrian elements as well. This type of work costs, on average, anywhere from 10 to 15 million dollars per mile. And so the, the roadways down below, on SH 4 in Cameron County, and McCall Road in Hidalgo, and 48 in Cameron, were doing similar type work, short-term and long-term investments. And so this is, this Business 77 is also in the mix, and we, we felt it necessary to meet with the city to talk about the preliminary project. Here's a project scope overview. Obviously, it encompasses the majority of the city of Harlingen. It also extends into the city of San Benito. What you see are the project limits. You also see color codes of how we identified particular project limits. Business 77 consists of seven and a half miles. State Loop 499, two and a half, 2.4 miles. As you can see here, this is existing traffic data, and I want to make it point, point out that in our, in our evaluation, roadways that have 20,000 average daily traffic or more suggest a six-lane facility. And most of these roadways here are within the limits, are exceeding that 20,000 threshold. On the graphic on the, on the left is considered a heat map, and the color codes, the intensity of red indicates the increased traffic incidents, the crashes per se. And that kind of evaluates throughout the entire corridor, mainly at the intersections, those conflict points. The graphic on the right suggests that the blue, that the red line indicates that the crash rate on Business 77 compared to roadway-type facilities across the state are exceeding that crash rate. Another graphic that pinpoints Business 77 kind of identifies the number of crashes through each year, and as you can see, it's, it's well above the 40 mark. The pie graph to the bottom, fortunately, no, no traveling motors have been killed. However, several non-incapacitated injuries, injuries per se, and several fender benders throughout the limits, as you can see on the, on the pie graph. Similar, similar evaluation on State Loop 499 indicates the graphic in red are your hotspots, as well as the red line suggests that if, as if the facility continues to operate as such, crashes will continue to increase. Graphic here, a little bit of a peak and valley roller coaster per se, but in 2011 to 2016, it ramps up, and 2017 to 2019 kind of mimics that same projection. Another simple graphic that captures what a, a facility without a raised median shows on the left, 11 conflict points. And the safety countermeasure by implanting a raised median reduces those conflict points to two. We hired Texas Transportation Institute to evaluate both corridors. High-level summary is Business 77 will reduce conflict points from 4,700 down to 1,100, 76% reduction, while as 495, 499, I should say, reduces in about 13%. I will note that as increase, as traffic increases, that 13% is somewhat dwarfed in that comparison. Real quick slides, just not too much engineering-wise, but this is the existing typical section along Business 77, a four-lane section with shoulders, and a six-lane section without shoulders. By improving this roadway here with a raised median, this right here is a six-lane facility with shoulders. This is also the long-term project. The red, the highlight, red box indicates that right-of-way will be needed to accommodate a shoulder, pedestrian facilities. Again, that long-term project. Preliminary studies, there's a matrix that we developed that points out constraints, but the graph, but the text to the left shows that the short-term investment is 7.5 million, approximately, no additional right-of-way, no displacements. But the long-term is in the tune of 75 million over those limits, approximately 16 acres, and approximately 20 displacements. Again, high-level, very rough, just scratching the surface. Then we turn over to Biz, State Loop 499, and we have three types of typical sections. And the, the four-lane section obviously is with shoulders. The, the typical section in the middle is mainly over the Arroyo Colorado Bridge, where it's very limited in right-of-way, and to facilitate a raised median, right-of-way will be needed regardless of the short-term or long-term project type. And then the six-lane section down below. Again, we evaluated that red box to the left, that's indicative on both sides, that right-of-way will be needed again for the long-term project. Again, another matrix here that we developed, short-term, the costs is at 2.4 million. New right-of-way, two acres, but again, that is just centered about that Arroyo Colorado Bridge, just because we don't have the right-of-way needed. And then the long-term is at 24 million, four and a half acres, and 19 displacements. We looked at existing conditions, the adjacent land use, stakeholders, and constraints. Obviously, we have major water crossings on the left, bridges, and some of the constraints that were noted within the project limits are, are available there. And the openings, when, when you have raised medians, is a preliminary, shows that Business 77 should have 20 openings, both directional and full combination thereof. 499 should also have six openings, directional and full. Again, high-level, without getting into the, into the, too much into the details. So in closing, Mayor, Commissioners, we're still here in the preliminary development stages to evaluate safety, countermeasures for both short-term and long-term projects. There's a balance of optimal openings and desirable raised median areas to address a safety concern through reduction of conflict points and crashes. Requested a meeting with the city to gauge interest and determine next steps with project development. So that's where we're here, Mayor, Commissioners, and we thank you for your time. Carlos, thank you for your time as well. There you go. Mr. Pete?
Yes, Mayor, Commissioners. We at TechDoc take great pride in not advancing projects without community support, elected official support. And so we wanted to introduce this project, get a feel, an understanding of how this commission feels about a project like this, that at the end of the day, it's to improve safety, improve mobility, and access, if you will, to the entire community. So once again, we thank you for your time at this point. If there's any general questions that we may be able to answer.
Yeah, I have a couple...
Received funding in the amount of $650,000. Unfortunately, it was due to some suspected serious injury crashes and some other non-incapacity crashes. And that was through the segment period of 2015 to 2017. So although we have one roadway segment in Business 77, the district decided to take a grand look at the entire stretch of Business 77 and State Loop 499 as it met the need and purpose of to improve safety. And this below graphic here is just the importance of what raised medians do. They reduce conflict points. So this is a large graphic here, but the project in so many words is there's two terms, the short-term investment as well as the long-term investment. And in so many words, a short-term investment is simply placing a raised median and providing an overlay over the entire roadway limits. And so this on average is about roughly a million dollars per mile. No additional right-of-way is needed on these short-term projects, other than a sliver along State Loop 499 near the Arroyo Colorado Bridge, just due to the limited right-of-way in that general area. And in so many words, the short-term project will address safety. The long-term project, it's more advanced. In other words, you're turning dirt. You're adding a lane on each side. You're acquiring right-of-way, and you address pedestrian elements as well. This type of work costs on average anywhere from 10 to 15 million dollars per mile. And so the roadways down below on SH 4 in Cameron County and McCall Road in Hidalgo and 48 in Cameron were doing similar type of work, short-term and long-term investments. And so this is, this Business 77 is also in the mix, and we felt it necessary to meet with the city to talk about the preliminary project. Here's a project scope overview. Obviously, it encompasses the majority of the city of Harlingen. It also extends into the city of San Benito. What you see are the project limits. You also see color codes of how we identified particular project limits. Business 77 consists of seven and a half miles. State Loop 499, two and a half, 2.4 miles. As you can see here, this is existing traffic data. And I want to make it point, point out that in our, in our evaluation, roadways that have 20,000 average daily traffic or more suggest a six-lane facility. And most of these roadways here are within the limits are exceeding that 20,000 threshold. On the graphic on the, on the left is considered a heat map, and the color codes, the intensity of red indicates the increased traffic incidents, the crashes per se. And that kind of evaluates throughout the entire corridor, mainly at the intersections, those conflict points. The graphic on the right suggests that the blue, that the red line indicates that the crash rate on Business 77 compared to roadway-type facilities across the state are exceeding that crash rate. Another graphic that pinpoints Business 77 kind of identifies the number of crashes through each year, and as you can see, it's, it's well above the 40 mark. The pie graph to the bottom, fortunately, no, no traveling motors have been killed. However, several non-incapacitated injuries, injuries per se, and several fender benders throughout the limits, as you can see on the, on the pie graph. Similar, similar evaluation on State Loop 499 indicates the graphic in red are your hotspots, as well as the red line suggests that if, as if the facility continues to operate as such, crashes will continue to increase. Graphic here, a little bit of a peak and valley roller coaster per se, but in 2011 to 2016, it ramps up, and 2017 to 2019 kind of mimics that same projection. Another simple graphic that captures what a, a facility without a raised median shows on the left, 11 conflict points. And the safety countermeasure by placing a raised median reduces those conflict points to two. We hired Texas Transportation Institute to evaluate both corridors. High-level summary is Business 77 will reduce conflict points from 4,700 down to 1,100, 76% reduction, while as 495, 499, I should say, reduces in about 13%. I will note that as increase, as traffic increases, that 13% is somewhat dwarfed in that comparison. Real quick slides, just not too much engineering-wise, but this is the existing typical section along Business 77, a four-lane section with shoulders and a six-lane section without By improving this roadway here with a raised median, this right here is a six-lane facility with shoulders. This is also the long-term project. The red, the highlight, red box indicates that right-of-way will be needed to accommodate a shoulder, pedestrian facilities. Again, that long-term project. Preliminary studies, there's a matrix that we developed that points out constraints, but the, but the text to the left shows that the short-term investment is 7.5 million, approximately, no additional right-of-way, no displacements. But the long-term is in the tune of 75 million over those limits, approximately 16 acres, and approximately 20 displacements. Again, high-level, very rough, just scratching the surface. Then we turn over to Biz, State Loop 499, and we have three types of typical sections. And the, the four-lane section obviously is with shoulders. The, the typical section in the middle is mainly over the Arroyo Colorado Bridge, where it's very limited in right-of-way, and to facilitate a raised median, right-of-way will be needed regardless of the short-term or long-term project type. And then the six-lane section down below. Again, we evaluated that red box to the left. That's indicative on both sides that right-of-way will be needed again for the long-term project. Again, another matrix here that we developed. Short-term, the costs is at 2.4 million. New right-of-way, two acres. But again, that is just centered about that Arroyo Colorado Bridge, just because we don't have the right-of-way needed. And then the long-term is at 24 million, four and a half acres, and 19 displacements. We looked at existing conditions, the adjacent land use, stakeholders, and constraints. Obviously, we have major water crossings on the left, bridges, and some of the constraints that were noted within the project limits are, are available there. And the openings, when, when you have raised medians, is a preliminary shows that Business 77 should have 20 openings, both directional and full combination thereof. 499 should also have six openings, directional and full. Again, high-level, without getting into the, into the, too much into the details. So in closing, Mayor, Commissioners, we're still here in the preliminary development stages to evaluate safety, countermeasures for both short-term and long-term projects. There's a balance of optimal openings and desirable raised median areas to address a safety concern through reduction of conflict points and crashes. Requested a meeting with the city to gauge interest and determine next steps with project development. So that's where we're here, Mayor, Commissioners, and we thank you for your time. Carlos, thank you for your time as well.
Yes, Mayors, Commissioners, we at Techstock take great pride in not advancing projects without community support, elected official support. And so we wanted to introduce this project, get a feel, an understanding of how this commission feels about a project like this, that at the end of the day, it's to improve safety, improve mobility and access, if you will, to the entire community. So once again, we thank you for your time at this point. If there's any general questions that we may be able to answer.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So you're going to be acquiring quite a few acres of right-of-way, narrow and long. And so you'll be acquiring right-of-way from existing property, property owners and businesses?
Yes, sir.
Is that, my assumption is correct?
Yes, that's the intent, yes.
Okay. And so then, how does that then affect their parking, the drainage that they may have on the side of the streets? Are you dealing with drainage at all, road runoff? Is that included in the, in your plans?
In the initial project, that we're going to be adding a raised median and an overlay, no additional drainage, breaking ground, if you will, everything would be done within the existing roadway parameters. In the long-term project, we would be adding an additional lane and shoulders and things of that nature. At that point, we would go back, add additional drainage. We would add inlets, ramps, access points, you know, for, for handicapped and things of that nature. In those type of projects, we, we would go through a more of a, of an effort to ensure that the property owners that may be affected with right-of-way acquisition, we have to follow federal and state law to, to properly compensate for any, any land use, whether that be a parking or a building itself. I don't anticipate any buildings at this point, but it would be like for parking and access points, all those things, the landowners would be properly compensated as required by federal law.
And who, who determines that rate of compensation?
So we go through the right-of-way acquisition process where, in that general process, there are two state-certified appraisers that would go in and do an evaluation. We would make a land, we would make an offer to the property owner. The property owner would have a right to counteroffer. They can hire their own appraisal agent if, if they so choose, and we would have a discussion to ensure that they're properly compensated.
And if someone says no or hell no, then what?
And so at that point, we do have eminent domain power, which means that for the greater good of the community, one property owner, for example, would not halt the progress in the, in the entire community. So we do have eminent domain power. Our, our goal is to work with the landowner to properly compensate and not get to that point, because at the end of the day, we want to improve the area.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Pete, I have a question. How far down on Ed Carey are you going to be going?
It'll be to, from I-69E to FM 106.
Okay, so the entire Ed Carey is going to have a raised median?
That is the proposal, yes, sir.
Is, is the plan to have to landscape any of these or any portions of the median?
The raised median itself, or the raised median itself, we, we do it very generic. It's concrete or brick pavement, actually, it's stamped concrete. Should the city elect to put brick pavers, landscaping, irrigation systems, things of that nature, we would entertain an advanced funding agreement where the city would be responsible to pay for those upgrades.
Okay.
So you've done, you've done this in McAllen?
Yes, sir, we've done.
And did you do the Ware Road, did you do Ware Road? Wasn't there quite a bit of opposition to the Ware Road project?
Yes, sir, and I happened to be the project engineer back in 2000 when we initiated that project. There was a lot of opposition at the time. The valley had not been exposed to the benefits of raised medians. We brought in TTI to bank presentations. We actually took video of these, these locations and demonstrated how cars were going against traffic, using the, the continuous left-turn lane as a passing lane as an example. And so although there was opposition initially, we have seen great benefits. The traffic there on Ware Road today is right around 35,000 vehicles a day. Here, it's about 20, 20 to 30,000, depending on what section you're working on. I drive Ware Road on a regular basis, and it's much safer.
Well, I drove it quite a bit, but my, my question is, could you provide that data to our city manager as far as the before, the before and after? I guess the, the improvements that were made or because of the improvements you made either to back up, like, that's, that's just one example, right? Of how it either created better flow, less traffic, less, less accidents?
Yes.
That's a very dangerous road, and there was, there's accidents there daily, right?
Yes, sir.
So I'd like to see, you know, there's, now that there's some kind of history and data, that's one that we can relate to that, that was very fairly recent.
Yes.
And, and that might provide some insight.
Yeah, most definitely. We have projects like FM 2220 Ware Road, State Highway 107 in Edinburgh. We're currently building State Highway 48 in Brownsville, FM 802 in Brownsville. So we have this data as we go through the process, through the public involvement process. These are the initial steps. There is a public involvement, public meetings where we would demonstrate and show videos, additional data. This is very high-level, just to, we wanted to, to do an initial presentation to you all, and hopefully you would understand the benefits of doing, doing a raised median. So we look forward to those opportunities should this commission want to move forward with the project.
And so how many years will this take?
Depending on how, how fast we can develop the environmental and the schematics, typically something like this is anywhere between two and a half to three years to implement. You can see the cost associated with projects like this, it's quite significant. We would need to prepare, and we are ready to, to finance projects like this for the betterment of the community. So to answer your question, approximately three years, it would be my best guess.
To start and probably five to six to finish?
No, well, once we start, a project like this can be done usually in about a 12-month period, because we're doing every, one year.
So we're looking about four years max?
Max, yes, sir. Everything's done within the existing roadway. Now, the long-term project, those type of projects that require right-of-way acquisition, utility adjustments, and things like that, those are usually 24 to, to, 24, two years, two to two and a half years to build.
All right, any, any other questions?
Mayor, I'd like to add that I think that we would like to entertain the possibility of landscaping the medium on Ed Carey, because that's a major corridor for the city. So I don't think we just want concrete down the middle of that corridor, so we'd like to have something. So I think maybe we can talk about that eventually.
Yes, we can most definitely talk about the particulars, advanced funding agreements, estimated cost, not only to construct, but also to maintain in the long-term. That's, that's something that we would do as, as the project develops.
Okay. All right, well, Pete, we certainly appreciate you being here. Thank you very much. It's always a, an honor to have a district engineer come and, and, and talk to us in person, and we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you once again for the opportunity. Have a great evening and a great meeting.
Thank you.
All right. Item two is the approval of the regular minutes, regular city commission meetings, minutes of July 7th, 2021. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing now, is there a motion to approve the?
Motion.
Second.
A motion of second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The motion carries. Item three, A3E, the consent agenda, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Submove.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The motion carries. Item four, consideration of possible action to approve an interlocal agreement between the City of Harlingen Police Department and Cameron County Emergency Management for the donation of 64 Motorola XTS 2500 radios to be used solely for official purposes. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners, and City Manager. Cameron County Emergency Management has requested a donation of 64 radios. These radios are currently under the Harlingen Police inventory, but they are not being used. If approved, the Harlingen Police is prepared to make that donation with certain restrictions. I am prepared to answer any questions.
We recommend approval of the donation, Mayor. We're not using the radios, and Cameron County could repurpose them and use them, so.
All right, so anybody have any questions? All right, is there a motion to approve the interlocal agreement?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Item five, consideration of possible action to approve a lease agreement between the City of Harlingen Health Department and the Harlingen Area Chamber of Commerce, and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement.
Josh? Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. We request that you allow us to lease space from the Chamber of Commerce. We're proposing to lease 3,087 a month for 1,616 and 40 square feet of the Chamber of Commerce. All this is going to be funded through the grants that we've, we've been awarded for COVID. And it's not the health problem, it's the COVID staff.
It's what again, I'm sorry?
It's going to be for the COVID staff that we have hired. It's not the health problem that is being moving.
And the chamber does have the staff and, I mean, I'm sorry, the space, so we recommend approval of the agreement.
The location is going to be beneficial for all of us.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, and we're, we're talking what time span? Months, years, or decades of COVID?
Our grant is funded to June 2024. We're hoping that we'll continue some of the funding. We're in negotiations with the chamber at least to lease it in a yearly basis, with the notice, of course, that if the grant funded is terminated, then we will terminate the contract.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the lease agreement?
Motion.
Second.
I have a question.
Commissioner?
Okay.
In, in the lease agreement, if, if the contract gets terminated, or your funding gets terminated early, do you have an out as far as not to pay the continued rent? Or is there, is it, are you locking down, are you, are you committing to a certain amount of rent?
And also, we, we're, we're agreeing, are agreeing that if the funding is terminated, then we will no longer, we'll just pay the end of that month, and that's it. Yeah, we're not going to be locked in or forced to pay another year.
Yeah, I know, but what if it's six months? Or, you know, if, if in, after a year and a half, you may have no more funding, but we still have a problem, we still have a need?
Right. Once, once the funding is, we, we got to have notice once the funding is going to be terminated. For now, we're secured for June 2024. If so happens that something happens with the state or CDC decides to stop the funding, then we will notify them ahead of time.
Commissioner, I'll get with Mark to make sure that that provision is in the lease, that if our funding is cut, that the lease automatically terminates.
But here's my second question. Do we not have space available at the ELC Center? Which is a better, better fit? I mean, that's an emergency operating center that we acquired years ago, right? And that's a fairly large space. Do we not have space to create offices there?
Not that I'm aware of.
Well, we, we might have some space, Commissioner, but this one is directly across the Health Department, so they could have oversight and just walk across the street to actually access the staff, so that's why we recommended that.
I'm talking about the rent factor, right? I mean, if we already have a building, then, then you have space available. Did you not consider the ELC? I mean, that's part of the, part of its scope, but.
Not the amount of space it will require for, for staffing and, and equipment.
Okay. Are you going to do vaccinations there, or is what you do?
We're, we're thinking about, once we have the staff there, we may offer some clinics there in that site.
Okay. That would be more accessible to the public than the ELC.
Yes, we have, we have that drive-through access, accessible for us, will be easier for staff to walk out and administer those vaccines.
Okay. Any, any other discussion?
One question. How much is it per month? Is it 1,500 or is it this 3,087?
3,087, sir.
What is that price per square foot?
A dollar ninety-one a square foot.
A dollar ninety-one.
At the same rate, we're paying for the CVB space.
But isn't it more standard a dollar?
Um, we, the reason it's, it's a little bit higher is because they also provide staff upfront to help answer calls and direct them. We have access to their copy machines, so it would be all-inclusive. We would just get the building ready to go. We wouldn't have to supply anything except perhaps for computers that we would be using ourselves.
That's, that's still a high rent factor. I mean, when you're paying double the amount of rent?
One of the benefits is we're not paying the electrical, the water.
I know, it's still, I mean, how much, that's a couple hundred dollars a month, not, you know, not over a thousand dollars more. I think that's an excessive rent, without looking at the particulars, right? Or two, I mean, not looking at, it just, it just sounds high.
Yeah, it's in the, one of the charts we provided with the details.
Right.
All right. Did we, did we have a, we haven't had a motion? Is there a motion?
Motion.
A motion of second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Appos.
All right. Item six, consideration of possible action to provide a written statement and finding of the city's need for specialized contingent delinquent tax legal services required on the Texas Government Code, Section 2254. Gabe?
Mayor, this, there was a change on September 1st, 2019. Texas Government Code 2254 now requires local governments to establish a written finding that there is a need to hire a law firm to provide specialized contingent delinquent tax services. This came directly from the Leinberger group that said that we needed to do this if we intended to hire them to undertake the collection of delinquent tax services. So in your packet is a copy of the finding that makes that determination. It merely states that there's a need to hire a firm to do that for us, that we don't have the, the staff in-house to actually get that done ourselves. And John is here, along with Mark and Monica, to actually answer any questions about the legality of this.
Okay, Ronald Sandoval wanted to speak on this item. Did you want to speak on this item?
Yes. I have to.
No, I'm sorry, you didn't.
Yes, yes, I do, because there's about four items that are tied to it. And Mr. Gonzalez just indicated that at the onset, that in September of 2019, the government code had been revised, and yet that was accurate, but then he says, well, the ones that told us was Leinberger. Well, I don't think that's correct. I think the code did. And furthermore, the fact that the quip was that the city may not have the personnel to do it, no, that's not what the finding says. It says that unerringly, and by Mr. Gervada, he posits that legal services cannot be adequately performed by local private attorneys at a reasonable cost. So reasonable is in the eyes of the beholder. For example, he contends the city paid attorneys like him over $700,000 last year. But now, now you're broke to go ahead and keep funding people like himself. So it certainly smacks of speaking out of both sides of your mouth. Today's local paper said that there's not political permanence. Well-written editorial highlighted a lot of people from Quica de la Garraza to the present. And unlike Leinberger's methods, they wanted to claim that I had realty elsewhere outside the city, so they sued me falsely, despite their proprietary software. I merely did a transaction like maybe somebody else at the podium has done in the past, but we don't own the property. So that's an ethical lapse, and they're often cited for such ethical lapses. So you ought to read what's in those agenda items six, seven, eight, and nine before you glibly hand them over some more money. Thank you.
Is there, are, are there any questions on this for?
This is not a contract.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the written statement?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The motion carries. All right. Item seven, consideration of possible action to award a contract for delinquent tax collection services to Leinberger, Goggan, Blair, and Sampson, and authorize the city manager to sign the contract.
Mayor, this is a contract for collection of delinquent taxes. For taxes owned prior to 2004, the rate would be 15%. For any taxes that are owed after 2005 and subsequent years, it would be 20%. This would be for a three-year contract terminated in November 2024, and has a one-year automatic renewal. We don't give them 90 days' notice that the contract will not be renewed. There is a 60-day notice to give to the company to carry deficiencies throughout the contract that we might find not performing. If they do not correct those deficiencies, then we can give them 30 days' notice to terminate the contract anyhow, after we give them a 60-day notice.
Is there a motion to award the contract to Leinberger?
Submove. I had a question.
Can we get a second, then the discussion?
Oh.
Second. Okay, we have a motion of second. Now discussion.
Okay, I'm sorry. I had a question, because I noticed on 2004 it was 15%, and now from 2004 forward, it's 20%. That's the maximum allowable rate, correct?
I believe so, yes, Commissioner.
Okay. And since it's the maximum allowable rate, we can also lower it down to 15% or no?
Yes, you can.
Okay, because I, does the, what other, like, does the county do it as well?
Uh, the county doesn't do delinquent.
They don't do, okay.
No, I think they only do current, and they've, they've got a contract to do our current delinquent taxes.
Yeah, okay. But we do have the power to lower it down to 15%.
I believe we do. That's correct. John, is that correct?
You do. A little bit of history on that, Commissioner. Back in, when the appraisal district was first created in the early 80s, and the code was written, the percentage was up to 15%. The purpose of, of the penalty is to encourage taxpayers to pay the tax rate that the commi- to pay the tax rate that the commission sets. Because you've set your budget on a certain amount of money coming in. So the incentive is to pay, to not pay the penalty and not hand over accounts to us for collection. You want to eliminate as few, as many accounts as possible that get turned over to us and get your tax rate paid. In early 2003 or 2004, the law was changed to move it up to twenty percent. And so with that, we incur all the costs. And that's not profit, that's, that's, that's everything. And so in 2004, or 2004, this city commission voted to raise, by resolution, to raise it to twenty percent. And it's by resolution.
Okay.
You're asking for thirty right now, right?
No, no.
Twenty percent.
Yeah. So, but my thing is, is like, I understand what you're saying about the twenty percent and stuff. And it's, it's used as a deterrent to, you know, to people to go ahead and pay. The way I see it though is, again, this is just my personal opinion. The way I see it is that there's a lot of people, if they can pay the taxes, they want to pay the taxes most of the time. The majority of people want to pay the taxes. But usually, when they have delinquent taxes, they usually can't afford it. And for me, if we have the opportunity to put it at fifteen percent, twenty percent, again, it's not a huge difference, but the thing is, when you have it the maximum allowable rate, I see it as you're basically kicking someone when they're already down. They're already down, they can't afford to pay the taxes. So I understand we have to add something to it, because that's only fair. But I don't think that we should do it the maximum amount. I think we have to show a little bit of compassion and probably lower it. I would suggest lowering it down to fifteen percent. I have no problem with Leinberger or anything like that. My thing is just lowering it down to fifteen percent.
What is your, the collection rate?
It's not, you don't add the twenty, you don't add the twenty percent to the total amount. It's twenty percent of what you collect.
Right.
It's not, you're not, you're not tacking on an extra amount. And it's not an additional fee to the property owner. This is a contingent fee agreement.
Okay, so it doesn't go to the, the, okay. Because I understand that part. So from my, from what the mayor's saying, so that extra twenty percent is not charged to the person that hasn't paid their taxes?
It is.
So it is?
It's, it's not, it's not a, our fee doesn't come from taxes. Our fee is a statutory add-on.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's a statutory add-on. So earlier, there was somebody that made a comment that, you know, you don't want to use tax dollars to pay our firm. It's a statutory add-on. So it's an add-on fee so that you get a hundred percent of what you're owed, plus the interest that the state allows you. And the state allows interest for you to get paid because you didn't have the use of those funds based on your tax rate. So like I said, the rate right now, by resolution, the city council is twenty percent. And that is good for, you know, the next time you can possibly change it would be for the 2022 taxes. Because it goes into effect on July 1st of every year.
All right, so that was, all right, I misunderstood that. So I, but the, I think what you said earlier is the rationale behind it was we're doing a better job of collecting.
Right.
That was my question.
You have about, you have about ninety-six, ninety-seven percent.
It's like ninety-seven to ninety-eight percent that we collect.
Of taxpayers that pay on time.
Yeah, so that was my question. I said, what percentage are we talking about that's uncollected, right?
Right.
If you're collecting ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent, we're talking about two, three percent of the people that are not paying. Right, or that are not able to pay or are not being able to collect.
Right.
And do you have an idea of, in those three percent, what's the average turn time on that? I mean, is it going to, is it an average of five-year, four-year, three-year before you do collect on those taxes?
They all depend. You know, you have some, we had a, like, we had a big business, one that everybody knows. You know, that was delinquent, and we were able to collect on that. That was a one-year. They were delinquent by one year. But it was so much that we had to do something about that. They didn't pay their taxes.
I can agree with Commissioner Pettis in saying that if somebody's having a hardship for having something, but they have, they want to pay. They also have the ability to reach out and negotiate with your firm, correct?
Correct. And, and.
It's not a.
And with the tax office, if somebody enters a payment agreement before July 1st, before the penalty kinks in, kicks in, they don't have to pay, they don't have to pay attorney fees as long as they make their payments, even if it's after July 1st. And the appraisal district and the tax office publicizes that, you know, right around June, July.
Is if they give notice that they're having an issue and they're not going to be able to pay, they won't get accept. They will not get assessed the twenty percent, correct?
That's correct.
They'll come up with some kind of payment agreement.
That's correct. As long as they're making their payments.
And that would involve the legal, you're legal? Or is that just your?
Well, now, now it's, the county's collecting your current taxes, and so they enforce them.
Okay, so then, and then, so it would kick it up to the county?
Right. And then, then it gets turned, it gets turned over to us at that point when they go delinquent. You know, a lot, you know, remember, you've got ninety-eight percent of the citizens of Harlingen and the businesses. Some of those struggle to get their taxes paid as well. And so they're not getting a break. So it's, it's, there's some hard-working people that.
Well, I don't see that as a delinquent people, as the way you're putting it, is you're like, kind of insinuate that we're giving the people that don't pay their taxes a break. It's not giving them a break, it's just being a little bit more compassionate. Because, I mean, you have these people that are struggling, obviously, because they haven't paid their taxes, and they're still going to have to pay for it either way. But I just feel that it's better to charge a little bit less. If we, if we have the power to lower it, I don't see why we don't. I mean, I think that it would be better for, because remember, ultimately, our main responsibility is to the constituents. And then if we can help them in a compassionate way of saying, you know what? We understand you're going through some difficulties. We understand that, you know, you can't pay. And, you know, hopefully, they do make those arrangements like you suggested. But there are going to be some that, you know, don't even know about that. They don't know about that, especially the older people, they don't know about it. And then all of a sudden, they just see this extra twenty percent. And I think that if we can just help them a little bit by lowering it down to fifteen percent, I think that would be beneficial, because you guys are still getting paid. And at the same time, we're showing compassion. Because there are other agencies that just charge fifteen percent, correct?
And there are others that charge twenty as well.
Yes.
And so the, yeah, I mean, that's correct.
But you can still negotiate that. It doesn't have to be twenty percent. The twenty percent, the increase was, it was, the intent was to go after those or to persuade those who aren't paying their taxes who can on time. They can still negotiate. It doesn't have to be twenty, we're just giving them.
So you negotiate the twenty percent?
No, I'm sorry, Commissioner, by statute, it is twenty percent.
Right.
By resolution, sorry.
So their job is to collect. If they're collecting ninety-eight percent. I can, I can, the way it's being explained, I can also see the fact that if they're not being able to collect their money on the other two or three percent, then they should be able to be charged, because they don't know if they're going to get paid that or not. Because at some point, it, like, let's say the taxes go off and there's a certain time period where it goes off, and there's those tax notices where the property goes for sale, right? You never, you get pennies on the dollar on that, correct?
Sometimes, when there is no offer.
Right.
We don't get paid.
You get it all.
You get pennies on the dollar, we don't get paid.
Right, I mean, so, so, there is, there is that window, Rainey, that you're talking about two percent, that maybe half of them are going to pay it, ever. So I can see them, because they do have, I mean, you have cost involved, right? There's cost, overhead.
And everything is going up. But I will assure you, our fees are nowhere near seven hundred thousand dollars. They're, they're twenty percent of that.
Is there any reporting? Because I haven't seen any reports. Do you issue reports?
We come before you often. We just haven't since you've been on the commission.
So how often do you? How often do you issue reports?
At least once a year.
Just once a year?
At least. If you want us to come more often, we can.
Is that by state law?
No. It's up to the client.
But you can give that to us at any time.
Absolutely.
At anybody's request. It doesn't have to be here.
Right.
We can get that, it's information they can provide for us.
And if I may make some other analogies. So if somebody doesn't pay their credit card bill off every month, they're paying a fee, right? It's to encourage you to, to pay your bill.
But they're still going to be paying. We're not saying, oh, we're going to forgive you, you don't have to pay anything.
But the interest on the credit card could be twenty-some percent, okay? And that doesn't stop people from paying or not paying. If you don't pay your mortgage, there may be penalties. And the severe penalties, just like in not paying your property taxes, is your property can be seized by the mortgage company. So it's a mean, cruel world out there. And the city needs, we budget for a hundred percent tax collection, and we need a hundred percent tax collection. That's how we run the city. And so that, if you provide incentives to keep delaying payment or not to pay, then the city runs, it's, the actual money coming in doesn't meet the budget. And then we have to cut and we have to trim someplace.
So you're telling me that someone who hasn't been able to pay their taxes, and when everything is said and done, they're going to be like, they've gone to this point where they can't pay. And then all of a sudden, because there's a difference between fifteen, twenty percent, oh, well, you know, it's twenty percent, now I'm going to have to pay it. You know, I'm going to pay it now, because, you know, I have to pay it.
But there's an incentive.
And you just said it's a mean, cruel world. What would be wrong if we showed a little bit of compassion and lowered it?
There is compassion in which if you pay your bill by like the end of October 31st, your bill is X. And every month thereafter, it's X plus one, X plus two, X plus three. So there's an incentive to pay your bill when you get it. And people struggle in life. And. Why do you want to make it harder? It's not making it harder. People have to be accountable and responsible for their own behaviors and actions.
This is, okay, this is a business, this is a business arrangement. This is a business contract between the city of Harlingen and the law, and the law.
If you want to be compassionate, lower it to zero, and there's no penalty, and everybody can be a scofflaw.
But they, but they can't work for free. They can't work for zero.
Yeah, and I'm nowhere my saying to lower it to zero. I've never said that.
They have to work.
But what we could do as a, as a city, right, is either have our BIO or where we advertise, or we contribute to that marketing, or either on our website or through the Waterworks building, or give notifications with enough time that there are, if they're having struggles, to, you know, here are the steps, right? And so that they can avoid that and make some type of payment arrangement with the county, and it will not go into their hands.
And so.
I can see that, I mean, that's true compassion. I mean, that really is. That would be the right thing to do, because it's being right by the vendor and being right by the city and being right by the, by the, the ones that do have the intent on paying. And they really strike, and they just need some time, or they need some kind of arrangement, they're going to come and talk.
Okay.
And it's not Leinberger's obligation, because they don't collect taxes. The county does. But how long were they collecting everything? The taxes? The delinquent taxes? The times have changed. If you have a complaint with, with the county not being nice and not sending out notices that your taxes are due, please pay your taxes on time, it's the county's problem. It's not Leinberger's. The county turns the tax, delinquent tax bills over to Leinberger to collect. Correct. I agree with that. Here's a issue. Several months ago, we moved away from Leinberger to the county. Why? Because we're saving forty thousand dollars a year. Along with that, over the past five years, we saved over, we could have saved two hundred thousand. Okay? Because it was in their hands. The same situation applies here. Okay? We have taxpayers that could use a break. Granted, there's only maybe two percent of the taxpayers that are delinquent. But if we're not here to help them out, what the heck are we doing? Charging them and kicking them when they're down?
Commissioner, in their defense, the county also didn't want any part of the delinquency either. Because it is a specialized thing that.
Correct.
It's a debt that may not get paid.
All right. But you know what? If it's that much of a hardship, we can always go with RFQs and find out if there's somebody else that's willing to do it. And then we can compare apples to apples and see what's out there.
I have, I have no problem with Leinberger.
We have a motion and a second to approve this contract as presented. So unless there's any other discussion.
I still have discussion. I have no problem with Leinberger whatsoever. I mean, you guys are good, I have no problem with that. All I want to do is I want to give the people of Harlingen a little break. That's all I want. I just want to give them a little break. I mean, sign the contract, all that. But the thing is, we approve the contract, then it's going to automatically renew. It's for what? You said two years, Gabe?
It's, no, it's three years.
Three years? And then it's going to automatically renew if we don't give them notice. And I'm fine with that. But I would just prefer to have it at fifteen. I know when I'm going to vote, I'm going to vote, because I would hope that you guys would agree with me where we can amend it, the contract, and then add the fifteen percent instead of the twenty percent. And then we can just send it the way it is right there, and we're good to go. I mean, in fact, I would like to make that motion.
Well, we have a motion in a second.
Okay, go ahead.
We have a motion in a second. So we're going to have to, we're going to have to vote on this one.
May I, may I ask what that dollar money is? The five percent, what is the difference in your current profile of delinquencies? How would that affect?
I mean, there's a spectrum, but, you know, on average, you know, the, I'd say the average is probably about seven hundred dollars that is owed to the city.
No, no, what I'm talking about.
Yeah, but the difference.
If we made the decision to go from twenty percent to fifteen percent, what impact does that give you overall? I mean, because like, it's all, I mean, it doesn't have to be an exact number, but, you know, when I look at, when we increase something, there's a, there's a calculation for taxes. Every penny is going to generate X amount of dollars. Well, in this case, you're taking away, so every percentage is going to take away.
It's a quarter cut. I mean, it costs us to employ people to do their jobs and to, you know, we have twenty-three staff members that, that.
And we've, I'm sorry, we, you all have already cut staff because we, we amended the contract.
We did on the Harlingen Tax Office.
You had to shut down an office.
Yeah, so that was, that was six individuals. But that, that, you know, on the tax office, you know, the tax office, we cannot make a profit on that. Whatever it costs us, that's what we, that's what we charge you guys. And originally, you know, twenty-five, thirty years ago is when the city of Harlingen approached us to run the Harlingen Tax Office. So that was a totally separate operation. And by the way, you had the highest current collection rates in the county consistently. So I hope that'll, that'll stay. It would have been better for us not to operate the Harlingen Tax Office. But, but, but we did, and we did it very well. And I was very proud of the staff that did, and they did an outstanding job for Harlingen. But we didn't make any money. We cannot by law make money on current. It was completely separate operation. So, but the difference between twenty percent and fifteen, it's a quarter for us. And so, again, we front all the costs. And so again, we front all the costs. We have to do title research. We have to file litigation. Have to put the newspaper ads out. I mean, all y'all know what newspaper ads cost. So it's a significant amount. Uh, we do mailings. We do 10 mailings on behalf of the city a year. Every one of those costs about $1.10 to to send it out.
Per per account.
Per account.
Okay, the only thing on that is, again, this is kind of similar. Because I know you're trying to bring it about to their bottom line, and I understand it's a business. I get that. But the thing is, you can't argue, like, say on Steck, that you don't care about the bottom line with Steck, what we're doing, or trying to do with Steck. But then say you care about the bottom line of Leinberger. When it boils down to it, it has to be the putting the people first. And I think um I think for this, I think the people of Harlingen, I mean, it's just a small percentage. And but I think showing compassion would be a good thing.
All right. Well, I think you made that point. And so the question now is, what does the commission want to do with this contract? We have a motion and a second on it. And I think uh we should call call a vote now. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, well, the motion carries and the contract is approved. Item eight is consideration of possible action as required in.
Question, I have a question. I have a question. Since uh, again, I'm just trying to understand a point right here. Because the motion passed, correct? Yes, it did, because we're three to two. Yes. So the contract is good, and then, but could I make a motion to amend that contract since it already got approved?
You can put it on the agenda at a later.
No, but I'm like right now. Could I make a motion to a, why? Could I do that?
Because we've already.
The motions were made and approved.
It's already been approved.
Yeah.
Okay, so I can't make a motion to amend the contract?
Not at this time.
Okay, cool.
Okay, uh, item eight is consideration of possible actions required in the Texas Government Code, section 202854. The city commission to provide a written statement and finding of the city's need for specialized contention fee municipal court legal services.
Mayor, this also is a finding similar to the one that we made for the Avalorin, but is for the collection of fees and fines. Staff recommends approval of this finding.
And this is for municipal court legal service?
Yes, it would include municipal court.
Is there a motion to approve the written statement?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The motion carries. Item nine, consideration of possible action to.
Did you vote against?
Yes, I voted against. And I, could I ask a question before we go into the voting?
Everybody votes?
Or is it too late?
I think we voted uh.
What I would like, if at all possible, gentlemen, I would like to see the reports of your collections for the municipal and the delinquent, okay? And I would like to see our contract beforehand instead of something given to us right before this meeting, which I didn't get to review. So no, I'm not happy with this selection of giving you our contract right off the bat. I would like to see RFQs. That's my statement, sir.
Okay, well, uh, I mean, obviously, the request for written reports is something you just ask for the. I will say that I I find the agreements in my packet. Uh, I think these were just extras, so you had them in front in front of you.
I I didn't hand anything out. They were included in the packet that we sent out on on Friday.
I mean, the contracts for the fees and collection services with Leinberger and the contract for the link, they're they're in the packet. Or at least they're in my packet here online.
That's not what you.
Okay, uh, so item nine, item nine. Mr. Lozano signed up for, so we're going to call, I'm going to call on Mr. Lozano to. Mr. Lozano, are you going to speak on public communication on this or not? I mean, I don't care. I mean, it's okay if you want to pass.
Well, just two clarifications. Uh, Mr. Givada knows, even if he didn't write it, he knows.
Please state your name and your residence address and then.
And it's 2410 Riverside Drive.
Commission.
The the issue is that he's contending in his submission to you that the city doesn't have money to pay. But but look at the admission he made. 20% of $700,000. That's over $150,000 that he garnered. I didn't realize it was like that because we realized Nevada was charging you over $500,000. So I was making a cumulative for various attorneys that are hired by the city. But now we have a clearer idea of just how much money he makes, and and he brought up costs. He's got the contract right in front of you. That's why I say read your read your stuff. He's going to be paid for all the costs. Every last penny is going to be paid for, and all of y'all know that. But he's making it look like, oh, woe is I, you know? I have to pay upfront. Well, you get compensated dearly because on this item, it is 30%. And maybe this time he won't deny it regardless of his, well, anyhow, good smile there.
All right. Uh, item nine, consideration of possible action to approve a contract for fees and fines, collection services with Leinberger, Goggan, Laren Sampson, LLP, and authorized city manager to sign the contract.
Um, Mayor, this is for collection of fees and fines. Um, it does include other other fees like mowing liens and any other fee that the city may may assess on on um any type of project or 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 citizen. It is a 30 cent charge that's set by statutes with that amount. We can't change. Uh, it is for a three-year term, uh, like the other contract. It would expire November 30th, 2024. And it does have a provision for a one-year renewal unless we give them 60-day notice. It has the same provisions that we can give the firm 60-day notice to cure any deficiencies that we may not uh, we may have an issue with. If they fail to cure those deficiencies, we can give them 30 days' notice to terminate the contract. Staff recommends approval. I'll answer any questions you may have.
Motion for an approval.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Can I hear a second?
Yes.
From Commissioner Puente. Okay. Uh, is there any discussion?
We're number nine, right? Correct? You're number nine?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there any discussion? And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign.
Nay.
All right, motion carries. Item 10, consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading calling for an election to be held on the date of the city of Harlingen's next general election, amending Harlingen City Charter, Article 3, Section 1. Move the date for regular municipal elections to elect the mayor and our city commissioners on the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November. Okay, and uh, Lozano, you you signed up for this item, please. Are you going to speak?
Yes, sir.
I didn't quite hear you there. Um, this item is the one that projects Harlingen to have elections coinciding with the general election. And we've had elections in the past in December, January, and currently May. So putting it in November is nothing out of the ordinary, and obviously, it's a a date that the legislature allows. And this allowance of a small D democratic election bodes well for democracy. The optimum pillar of our country and city is a participatory democracy, not an exclusionary one. So I believe Commissioner Puente was correct on that item, that uh, the turnout will be greater if we I think we've had it in November at least once, and if we revert to that, I think we're going to have a bigger turnout. And I hope you all consider that.
Okay, this item was proposed by Commissioners Arriba and Puente.
Yeah, so I mean, if we pass this, this is something the attorney would draw up and put on the ballot?
Yeah, this this would have no effect on the election in May. This would go into effect.
But you would write up the coordinate so that they can vote on it, yes or no, right?
Yeah, the language is, the language is actually already in the proposed ordinance. So yeah, it would be a charter election that would be on the ballot in May, and it would go into effect after the election. If passed.
So the first November, the first November election would be.
The uniform election date in November.
Be in 2024.
I have a question or several. Back in November 6, 2012, we had elections. Then it got switched over to May of 2013. Did that go to the voters?
Uh, no, it did not. There was a window of time when the legislature allowed the commission. And it and the and the switch to the November election didn't go to the voters either. Uh, the because there was a window in time that the legislature allowed the city to elect when they wanted to have their elections, either in November or in May. And so one commission moved the election to November. A subsequent commission moved the elections back to May under that provision. And I don't know whether.
Yeah, there was a there was a statutory, there was a window that they could do that. But right now, you've got a city charter that requires that your municipal elections be held at the uniform election date in May. So in order to change that, in the absence of that special legislation creating a window, you've got to amend the charter.
I understand.
That's why.
And that was for a special meeting, wasn't it? Or a runoff, I believe?
There were some special circumstances. I don't recall what they were back then.
One question, another one here. Was this November 6, 2012, the only time this city had an election on November?
I couldn't tell you that.
Okay, Desi, go ahead. State your name and your residence address.
Name is Desi Martinez. We worked very hard to petition under the charter. And thousands of people signed up. City's secretary has the records. She knows all the legal official documents. The gentleman wasn't here, so she, city manager was. And we petitioned, we petitioned very hard all over town to meet the charter requirements for an election. We submitted petition and we, uh, the year before, the petitioners uh was certified by Amanda. And we had the election in May the year before. It passed by 75% of the of the voters. Uh, 73, 75. It was a huge majority. What happened then, we held the elections then in November when President Obama was running. And there were candidates of your prestigious position that ran. And it and one of the candidates turned, well, not turned, but changed. And then in the midnight hour, the commission, on the last day, just by very little uh public notice, on a Friday filed to have a whatever it is the rules are, Amanda has the records. And they came in and changed it. There was that window, but not on the petition. The people, 75% of the people of the city of Harlingen voted to have elections in November. We have been robbed, because I was part of that petitioners working out there in the sun. We had been robbed of our petition. If I was the commissioner, I would just have a resolution, change this, and let have have whoever objects to it. But you want to take it back out to the public, it's okay. But legally, he wasn't here. That's not the way to cover it. They didn't have a window. They were, they went against the public's petition under city charter of Texas.
With all due respect, I don't think there was ever, there was never an election for a November election. There was never, uh, nothing was placed on the ballot. But uh, having said that, let me, I will suggest, I'd like to suggest some things for you to consider as you consider whether to approve this. The legislature, I think, in in their wisdom, set aside May for municipal elections. I think that, and that was a good decision because that sets municipal elections, both the city elections and the school district elections, aside and away from the national and state elections. And one reason for that is because municipal elections and school board elections are nonpartisan. We don't affiliate with a Republican or Democrat or any other organized parties. We we run as a nonpart, in a nonpartisan fashion, which I think is a huge strength for municipal elections. And I think that that's a very positive thing for municipal elections. Another reason the legislature selected the first Saturday in May for local municipal elections is because Saturday is really more accessible to working-class individuals rather than a Tuesday. Now, we have early voting that accommodates both uh, both elections in November and in and in uh, and in May, but were the, but municipal elections are the only ones where you have available a Saturday for people to go vote. I think that's a huge advantage for people to be able to go out on a Saturday. If you're a teacher, it's hard for you to get off from work on Monday through Friday to go vote. Or you have to go vote after work, but you can vote on a Saturday. So the design of this was well thought out by our state, our Texas legislature. Uh, the other reason why I think it would be a mistake to move local elections to the November, to November is uh, because you get, you'll get buried. The municipal elections will get buried in, if there is a national or a state election in that cycle, you're going to get buried in all of the advertising that goes on for uh, national races and the state races, the president, the gubernatorial race, all the money that goes into those races, all the billboards that are bought, all the advertising that's taken up, all the direct mail that goes out, all of it will get, you know, the municipal elections will get that much attention. And finally, you're not going to achieve what you want to achieve, and that is more people turning out because you're because you're only going to have, for example, Edinburgh and South Padre Island had municipal elections this past November. There was no state election. There was no municipal, there was no national election. So you did, they did not get to ride the coattails of national and state elections to bring people out. The November election that we just had, the turnout was also dismal. It was very dismal. And people that were voting for the Texas constitutional amendments, and the county had their proposal for allowing the arena uh, to be funded, very, very small turnout in November. So November elections don't increase the turnout. And they're not going to, and they're only going to coincide with the national elections. So from from 2022 to 2040, you'll have city-only November elections six times. You'll have city and national election, November elections four times. You'll have city and state November elections twice. So you're not even going to have, you know, big turnouts every single election. You're only going to have uh, larger turnouts because of the presidential and gubernatorial races in half, in half of those elections. So it really doesn't, so so then you've got people sort of gaming the system, which, you know, which election do I want to run in? One where there's uh, one where there's no presidential election and there's no gubernatorial election? You know, let's keep it on a level playing field. If we have, if we continue using what the state has traditionally prescribed for us, which is a focused city and 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 school district elections in May, uh, we're much, we're much better off. The other thing I would like to say, and without being too offensive here, I don't think it's right for any city commissioner to extend his term by uh, voting to place in a charter amendment on the uh, on the ballot that would actually extend your terms by six months. You didn't get elected, voters didn't elect you for three and a half years. They voted, they elected you for three years. And you should honor that. You should not put it, you shouldn't put anything on the ballot that would extend your term for six months. And so for those reasons, I think uh, we should not move our elections to November. We should leave our elections in May.
I I think that I, my turn, my turn. I think the mayor brings up some good points. Uh, these were some points that honestly that I was considering as well. Um, and was, because I see moving it to November as a as a double-edged sword. And the mayor does bring up some good points, um, you know, about, you know, right now, the way our country is divided right now with Republican and Democrat. And in my turn, our city elections, which he has a good point, are nonpartisan to partisan. And I see that. Um, but I don't agree about the voter turnout because actually I had these thoughts and I, and I actually called Remy um, from Cameron County, and I was asking him some questions earlier today because I wanted some information on how it would affect us if we moved it to November. And the one thing that he assured me is that it would basically increase voter turnout. Um, in the next election that we're having in May, what I'm hoping we're doing and we're going, well, I'm hoping we're going to do is we're going to switch it to county. So if we switch it to county, um, the people are going to have a lot more hours to vote. And I understand what the mayor is saying, the benefits of having um, an election on a Saturday, which is awesome. But the thing is, if prior to this, I mean, if you really wanted people to vote, like in my election, when we had the election in May, you wouldn't have early voting from eight to five when everybody was working, um, and they couldn't come out to vote. But hopefully, once we switch it to the county, we're going to have it, hopefully, I believe I signed to Remy, we could put it, I think, from eight to seven, nine to seven. And I also asked about the Saturday, because I know you mentioned the Saturday. During early voting, um, the Cameron County has early voting Saturday and Sunday. So we can do it there. Um, that would benefit that. That would, that would take away that. So we'd have a whole weekend of early voting. And from what I understand, most people actually now do early voting than the actual um, day of voting. So overall, like I said, I was thinking about it for a while, but overall, I think moving it to November, um, the benefits of it um, would outweigh the um, the negative aspect of it. And honestly, it's not really, ultimately, what I'm really in favor of most, well, not most of them, all the time, is letting the people of Harlingen decide. That's what it's going to boil down to. All we're doing is putting on the ballot. If the people say, you know what? No, we shouldn't do this, then hey, we don't do it. But if we put it in on the ballot and the people of Harlingen say, you know what? Let's move it to November. Let's move it to November.
Exactly right. That's going to be my only point. We're not making decisions to move the election or not, with all due respect. We're just giving it to the people. Let them decide. And honestly, I, we discussed that, I discussed that with the attorney. I'm not looking to extend anybody's term or shorten anybody's term. We're giving the the people the opportunity to vote. And and like Mr. Desi explained, it was this petition already before. 75% of the people that the population voted for November elections, we'll just put it on the ballot and let, and let them decide how we govern.
We have to, ultimately, we have to trust the people.
Exactly.
Let me give you some numbers.
So so I'd like to make a motion for an approval. Does anyone get a second?
Second, thank you.
Okay.
Let me give you some numbers.
Wait, we have a motion.
We have a motion in a second.
In November of 2012, 8,134 people voted. May of 2013, the mayor's race, 6,176 people voted. May of 2016, 3,851 people voted. May, mayor's race, 2019, 3,962 voted. So there is a significant number of drop of people that that don't vote. Okay, so that's something we all. So that's something we also need to consider. Thank you.
If I may say something?
We have a motion in a second, and any discussion?
Yeah, yeah. So that the three Schlemmels on this side, we would, we would have our term extended six months to November.
I thought we would lose it. I thought we would be losing it.
No, 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 our terms would be extended three, six months to November of 24. We were elected in '21, '22, '23, '24. Okay? So our terms would be extended by six months. And in that's a even year, so there will be congressional-presidential-type elections. These three people over here, their election would be in 2025, and there are no county or state or federal elections in November of 2025. The other item is, is that currently in May, you guys are all concerned about costs, it's very expensive to put on an election, whether it's for three of us or three of them. And so we share those expenses with the school board. We split the costs.
Thank you.
And, and it saves the city money, and it saves the school board money.
Y'all discussed this before?
No, 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 it's a point that he's bringing up.
It sounded like, looked to me like you had some recognition of this issue.
Oh, no, I haven't done.
I'm laughing, I'm laughing.
Wait, wait, excuse me, I'm still, may I still speak, please? Thank you. So this will, the school board, when they have their elections, this will drive the cost up to the school district. And where's the school district going to get the money from? Or they, you know, they've got to cut something someplace to run an election from now till forever. So it's necessary that the school district and Harlingen split the costs. It saves us both polling booths and polling costs. And I'm sorry, who's, who's laughing at me?
Oh, no one's laughing. It's coming from the audience here.
Oh, the guy from the audience. Oh. Is that proper to be laughed at?
They can move it, they can move it also.
Excuse me? Is he on the order?
Point of order.
He is out of order, so please don't, don't raise your voice. Okay, please continue.
Okay. So that you're going to drive up election expenses for the school district for whom you work? And you're going to drive up expenses for the city for whom we all work for $100 a month? And so on the non-congressional-county-presidential years, it doesn't mean a thing whether it's in November or May.
What you were saying about the school board, the school board basically is moving to county as well, so they'll be sharing the, the cost with the county, just like, just like we would be sharing with the county as well. And then even on the off-years, from what Remy told me, that's usually the time when the state does the constitutional amendments, like they did just recently, so they have to be open for the voting too. So again, we'll be sharing the cost with the county as well.
So I'm confused. Are you saying the school board is moving their elections to the county?
From what I understand, I, from what I understand, I don't, I'm not a member of the school board, I don't know, but from what I heard, they were thinking about moving it.
From where did you hear this, that they moved it?
They're not.
They're not? Okay.
They're not.
Excuse me? Wait, 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 I'm not done, Richard. If I may, please. Thank you for your courtesy. So that, so that we, it's, it's very proper for the school and the city to share costs. And so are you proposing, the other thing I'm confused on, I'll ask you since you mentioned it, Rainey, so you're asking the county to take over our elections?
I'm, no. The key word, I'm not asking the county to take over elections, I'm asking our county to administer our elections. We will still be in charge of the elections, on the dates and locations and all that, but they will administer them. Because, you know what was frustrating for me? I don't know if it was frustrating for you. And the thing is, I feel, I feel, I feel bad for Amanda and the staff during the election.
We need to, the discussion is about moving the elections to November.
Yes.
And I think we need to keep the discussion on moving the elections to November.
Well, I'm ready to vote, let's vote.
Okay. Wait, just one, a couple, couple of points, just for clarification, no one who asked for this is asking for an extra six months. And I just want to clarify that, because there's some confusion that we're doing this to extend our, our elections, or our tenure for six months. So just, just, I wanted to point that out, that all we're doing.
I didn't suggest that.
It would only be for us three.
I know that.
They would like to abstain.
But mayor, you said it was unfair for, for someone to put this on the agenda to extend their tenure, and they didn't, they didn't do that. As far as the points that you, you were making, in, as far as the dismal turnout in November was obviously because what was on the agenda, and I agree with you, it was dismal, but look at what we were voting on. Bringing our elections to November along with other county-state-national elections, I think would actually benefit. You said that we would be caught up in, in an immense amount of advertising, and I think that's actually helpful, because the more you see, the more you remember, and the more you educate yourself. So I think, I think that would actually help our elections. The issue about people voting on Saturdays, a lot of people forget to vote on Saturdays because they've got things to do with their families when they've been working all week long. And there's actually been agencies and organizations and employers who incentivize, or incentivize their, their employees to go out. They actually remind them to go out on Tuesday, to you have an extra hour of your lunch hour to go and, and vote. So it's actually an incentive for some of the employers who actually remind their, their employers to go vote, which I think is a positive thing. So I think it, you know, there's, we can argue all night long about the pros and cons, but again, we're, we're just bringing this up, and I didn't mean to offend anybody or hurt anybody, but I just wanted to bring this point up and this idea to let the voters decide on whether we should move this election from May to November.
And that's where I think the, the mayor's point is moot, because he's saying that we're putting it, we're going to, we're kind of voting to extend our, our, you know, our tenure, but that's not what we're doing. Factually, what we're doing, mayor, is asking the, the people of Harlingen to make this decision. So it's the people of Harlingen that will decide that, not us. All we're doing is putting it on the ballot, that's all we're doing. So by you insinuating that, oh yeah, they're going to be voting to, you know, extend their, their tenure, that's not what it is. We're telling the people of Harlingen, this is your choice, it's all about choice. You make the decision, people, you're the people of Harlingen.
Yeah, but that's not what's going to be on the ballot. What's going to be on the ballot is move the elections from May to November, and it's not going to say, and by the way, you're also going to be extending the terms of the three city commissioners. And so it is a, that is a real issue, and I, and it is a real issue. It is a real issue that you should consider, and it is something that, you know, is going to be a natural consequence of the elections being moved from May to November. I do think that you all have missed, you have missed the point, that there, you're only going to have municipal elections half the time in a presidential and state year. You're not going to have it every, every time there's a presidential or a state election. You're, you're going to have it, you're going to have it half the time, and because the terms don't sync up.
Right.
And so it, it doesn't do what you think it's going to do, and, and you need to recognize that.
I think, I think Remy would disagree with you, the Cameron County election, person that's in charge, and you're right, it, maybe you're, I'm not going to debate your facts.
It's simple, man.
No, 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 I'm saying, you're right. No, 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 I'm not saying that, that's not what I'm saying.
You won't have, you will not, with three-year terms, you're not going to have, you're not going to have elections every, you're not going to have municipal elections every time there's a state or gubernatorial or presidential election. You're going to have an off-year election like you had this past time, where, yes, there, where the only thing that's going to be on the agenda is something nobody really cares about, and that's charter, maybe some state constitutional amendments. So, you know, don't dismiss that, because that's a very real issue. You're not going to have, you're not going to have the kind of voter turnout every single time. You're only going to have it, you may get an increased voter turnout half the time. Look, I agree that we want to have higher voter turnout. I agree that we want to have higher voter turnout in the November elections. We don't have, we don't have good voter turnout in November elections either, but this isn't the answer to what you're trying to accomplish.
Okay, and I agree with you, mayor, we, we're not going to have that, what you're saying, that turnout half the time, but we don't have it now. So moving it from May to November technically will be the same thing. And I honestly believe it would increase voter turnout if we do move it to November during the general elections.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
All right. Item 11, it's consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading, amending Harlingen City Code, Chapter 8, Aviation, Article 2, Section 8.86, to repeal Section 8.86 and to replace with a new Section 8.86 regarding the created composition, appointment, removal, terms, vacancies, and ethics of the airport board.
Mayor, actually, I'd like to take this. Right now, your city charter regulates your composition of your airport board and the manner in which your directors of your airport board are appointed. You also have a, you also have an ordinance, which is Division 3 of your airport board. Your charter states that, in regard to terms of office of your airport board members, that expiration of each appointment is to be succeeded by the appointment of a respective succeeding member to serve a term of three years, the expiration and succeeding appointed procedure to continue. Your ordinance provides that successful appointment shall be appointed to five years. So you have a conflict between your charter and your ordinance. Part of the, part of the purpose, half of the purpose of the revision of this ordinance is to resolve the conflict you have between your charter and your ordinance, with obviously your ordinance needing to be reformed to be consistent with your charter requirements. The other half of this, and, and there is a, there is a typo in the, in the middle of paragraph B, which I will get to in a second, is your charter does not provide for the removal of airport board members. It just doesn't address it at all. You have a general air, you have a general ordinance which applies to city boards, which does not appear to apply to the airport board, that allows for removal of board members only in the instances of, that they cease to possess the qualifications, they're convicted of a crime other than traffic, they're convicted of violating city ethics ordinances, or they owe the city property tax. So on the suggestion of commissioners, the provision for removal, and this is, this is not a, this is not a legal requirement, this, this half of it is policy, all right? That the city commission be given the authority to remove any board, board members for whatever reason. So the mayor would still appoint with the approval of the commission, which is what we're doing now, which brings me to my typo. If we look at, and we talk about...
Excuse me, which document? The one-page, Chapter 8, or?
Chapter B, 8, Chapter 8, Aviation B, appointments to the Harlingen Airport Board, and I go on to talk about the different circumstances of a person's term were to expire, or if a person was, so it states, on the, on the expiration of each member's term, a resident citizen of the city or state shall be appointed by the mayor with the confirmation of the city commission as the replacement appointment, which is, which is the proper procedure according to the charter. If a vacancy in the airport board occurs, such vacancy shall be filed by the appointment by the mayor with the approval of the city commission.
Excuse me?
And...
Pardon my confusion.
Go ahead.
Are we talking Chapter 8 Aviation, Article 8 Boards?
Chapter 8 Aviation. It's, it's at the top of the Part 1, City Code, Chapter 8 is amended to appeal Section The proposed city ordinance.
In this huge document, where exactly?
It's the, it's the ordinance that's in your packet, commissioner. It's, I, I think there were some sections of the city code that may have been provided to you, but it's, it's the ordinance that's in your city packet.
Well, that's not the ordinance that's proposed.
It's, it's under Tag 11 in the pack. It's under 11.
He didn't.
Oh, okay. It's not the print.
I just gave you some extra handout information, so...
I got you, thank you.
So if you wanted to look at it for reference purposes, you could. If you go down to Part 1, Chapter 8 Aviation, Section B. Okay. So the ordinance needs to be consistent with the charter. So we talk, so clearly, under the charter, the mayor makes the appointment with the confirmation of the city commission. And I, and I talk about that, but I talk about several different circumstance, and in one of those, I stated, in the event that upon expiration of a term, any such board member, his replacement is not succeeded by appointment by the city commission, it should be succeeded by appointment of the mayor with the confirmation of the city commission. It should use the identical words that I use everywhere else in that paragraph. Other than, other than that, that's, basically, that's what...
So you're just adding on that one appointment by the mayor and?
There is no change to the appointment procedure, because the appointment procedure is prescribed by charter.
Okay.
The, the biggest substantive change to this ordinance is making the ordinance, which provides for terms of office of five years, consistent with the charter requirement, which requires terms of office of three years.
And then also...
And it makes a reference to removal by the city commission, which is covered in the other ordinance.
Okay.
And why? Under what circumstances may the city commission toss people off of the airport board?
Presently, there, the, the situation is not addressed at all. Presently, there is nothing in the charter or your ordinances which specifically address any kind of removal procedure at all for the airport board. So the, the suggestion that was made by the commissioners, right, which is before you, and, and I always like to differentiate between what's legally required and what's policy. The first portion of this is legally required, because you've got a clear conflict between your, okay?
Obvious.
That's, that's legal. Now, 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 we're talking policy, right? So it's up to the commission to decide, under what circumstances the airport board members should be removed. The proposal in this ordinance is that the city commission be allowed to remove board members for, for any reason. And frankly, this is not unusual, in, in that members of volunteer boards frequently serve at the pleasure of the city commission. But as a policy matter, that's up for this board, this commission to decide, one way or the other.
And so then there are X amount of board members to the airport, and the city commission at each city meeting can decide to remove someone for whatever reason, whether it's wisdom or politics?
Under, under this, under this proposal, and it is not unusual, for city board members who are appointees to serve at the pleasure of the commission.
Well, no, but the charter here, our charter does not provide for removal of airport board members by the city commission.
It doesn't address it at all.
But it, but it does for waterworks board members. There is a mechanism in the charter for the city commission to remove a waterworks board member. So I would submit to you that that's an intent, that that is an intentional crafting of the charter, that there is not a mechanism to remove airport board members, because you can look at another similar board, and there is a removal provision. And so one could determine, you know, you could interpret that, and I do interpret that to be an intentional distinction between the airport board and the waterworks board. And therefore, I don't think that we can amend, and I'm sure you have a different opinion, but I don't think that we can amend the airport board provision through an ordinance, because it's a charter, it is, it's part of a charter.
Mayor, with due respect, I do agree. I, I think the fact that the city charter was specifically worded in a way to provide for a removal provision for members of the, for members of the water board, means that the charter wanted to restrict the manner in which airport board members were removed. And the fact that it shows not to address it at all leaves it up to the city commission, and the absence of a clear conflict leaves it up to the city commission to pass an ordinance, and the city commission certainly has the authority to pass any ordinance that does not conflict with the charter. The fact is, there is no charter provision.
Okay, and so, and the other point here is that there is no current mechanism to... remove an airport board member.
Correct.
Okay, so this is all being done to, or, in an effort to get to the point where the commission can remove an airport board member.
It, well, I-
I mean, that's, that's obviously the purpose of it.
I think-
I'm asking you to comment on that, I'm making, I'm making a statement. It's not, wasn't a question, it, it, it's just a statement about what the, what the purpose of this ordinance is. I wanted you to confirm that there is currently no mechanism to, to remove an airport board member.
There is currently no mechanism.
You know, I submit that, and I, and we do disagree on this, but I submit that that is inferred from the charter, that it's not, not intended to be. And, and the, the, the history, the history of this is, is such that the airport board is, I think the whole idea with the airport board was to remove politics from the airport board. The airport board, the airport is such an important economic driver for our city, it's such an, and, and it's a, you know, if you look at what's going on with the airport right now, if you look at three new airlines being added in the last two years, to three new commercial airlines, if you look at the airport extension runway project that's underway, if you look at everything, at the $24 million in CARES Act funding that was granted to Valley International Airport, whereas Brownsville and McAllen only got a fraction of that amount, and, and the airport in Harlingen was rewarded because of the significant, because of no, having no debt, basically great management out of the airport, that I'm going to submit to the commission that, you know, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. It isn't broken, it doesn't, doesn't need to be fixed. We don't need to be munking with the airport, we don't need to be munking with the airport board members. And the, the idea that the mayor would appoint all of the airport board members, and that you can't, and that the commission can't remove airport board members, was to try to remove the politics from the airport and allow it to operate as a business. And it's done great in that fashion. So this is, this is messing around with a great institution, and we just don't need to be doing it.
I have a question for the lawyer. The airport is out here, and it has a dotted line to Harlingen City, correct? The airport is not a direct division of the city of Harlingen.
It's a semi, semi, yes, it's-
It's the dotted line.
Well, it's, it's a, it's a department of the city, but it has its own unique-
Independence, it has its independence.
Well, I, I think it's-
Is that a correct word?
I, I don't, wouldn't call it, I'd call maybe perhaps semi-autonomy.
Semi-autonomy?
Yeah.
Okay, very, very good. And so, has, in your knowledge, you've only been here a few months, has the city commission interfered with the airport at all?
Commissioner, I'm, I'm here to give you legal advice, I'm not here to give you political recommendations, all right?
Okay.
The, if, if the question, if the question that's being posed to me is whether or not the city commission has the authority to, to enact an ordinance allowing for the, providing for the removal of board members in the absence of any charter provision that addresses the issue, I'm going to tell you, yes, it does. Now, how you as a body choose to address that issue, that's a political decision, and that's up to you, y'all. I'm here to give you legal answers to legal questions.
Very good.
And not address political ones.
Okay, okay, thank you. So, so this, this movement, this motion will inject politics into a, a political organization, the Harlingen Airport?
No, it's not. It's not political.
Nick, I, I put this on, and if, if Mike, if you haven't been paying attention, what I'm, what I've always addressed since I've been on this board is, anything that's in conflict with our charter, the, any charter changes should go to the voters. And I haven't finished my work yet, but when I get done with it, I'll share it with the commission. But when I, when I share with you the number of city ordinances that were put in place that are in, in my opinion, direct violations of our city charter, that we're not done, and, and we, and we, and I've been part where we've removed instances to create an item, not addressing safety or anything else. This is not anything new. All I'm trying to address is, one, our, our city charter says it's a three-year term, and we have an ordinance that says it's a five-year term. Let me clean that up. When I was a part of Water Works, the way I got put on Water Works, because they removed somebody from the Water Works board, because there was no, or there was a big disagreement on what could you be removed for or not. This is simply giving the authority to this commission, as a commission, not as a commissioner or, or the mayor, but as this governing body, and as it changes, that as times change or whatever, they serve at the pleasure of this board. And we, as a board, will do what I think is best for the city. So that's what I wanted to address, that's what's before us.
I had a quick question. Marv, that ordinance, did you say that conflicts with the charter? When was it introduced, or when did it become an ordinance? Does that have a date?
Resolution 06R19 became, was enacted on May 17th, 2006.
Okay, so in, so right now, the arguments that we shouldn't interfere, because you say that, you know, we should infer and all that stuff, but in 2006, you thought it was okay to introduce an ordinance that actually went against the charter. So 2006 was okay, and you didn't have, technically, you didn't have the legal authority to do that.
Reconciling, reconciling the ordinance with the charter, I don't, I don't object to.
Okay, I just want to make sure, okay.
That should be done, that should be done, I completely agree with that.
That needs to be done. And I'm, and I'm trying to just-
My objection is to inserting something in the charter, because, because the Water Works provision for removal is very specific. I mean, it's, it requires good cause, it requires a four, requires a four to one, and, you know, it's, it's not, it's, it's, you know, and you're not doing that here. I mean, you're not-
Because it's not there. I mean, and, and, and the thing is, if the, if the city commission wants that type of restriction for the airport board, the proper, and, and its charter, it can, you know, go out to the voters with a charter amendment and amend the charter. The problem is, the charter doesn't address the issue at all. So it, it's kind of difficult for me to say the city commission doesn't have the authority to enact an ordinance if it chooses to, in the absence of any provision providing for removal. The other, the other thing, Commissioner Mesmar, I did want to supplement my response. You asked about the dotted line and whether it was part of the city or not, and, and I'd like to read a section from your own charter, Article 9 Municipal Airport, Section 1C, dealing with acquisition of real property. And your, your charter, the city of Harlingen's charter says, "Any acquisition or conveyance of real property by the Harlingen Airport Board shall be presented to the city commission for its approval, which must be obtained for the proper acquisition or conveyance. The Harlingen Airport Board shall take title to any real property it requires as follows: Valley International Airport, a department of the city of Harlingen, a municipal corporation." So the, the two entities are clearly related.
Yes.
And so-
And, and what I also want to make sure that there's clear about, that we don't have any members serving 12 years, 15 years, 20 years on a board, okay? Those are, those shouldn't, just like our position should not be permanent, okay? They're not. It's a very important board, and again, not taking the power away from the mayor of appointing whoever he wants to appoint, you know, that'll also go to the voters at, at the next election and let them decide, but there's a clear conflict in the ordinance, I mean, in the, in the charter, and I want to address it.
You know, and I'm all for sinking the charter and, and the airport with respect to lengths of terms. What I, and I think now we're mixing, that's the smokescreen, but we're mixing politics into this. So if that could be separated, I would be for it.
Commissioner, that's, that's why I was, wanted to be very clear, the legal conflict exists, deals solely with terms of office.
Right, and that's what we need to fix.
That's why I said the other, the other, this other portion is a question for the, for the board as, as a, as a city commission. It's, it's a, it's a policy decision that the city should make. Typically, city charters and city ordinances provide for removal of board members. You, you, and, and in this case, and that's, that's, I think the mayor's example was a good one, with the Harlingen Water Works, there were very specific terms that were provided, but the charter's silent, for whatever reason, on removal of airport board members. And so this is a policy decision that should have been made a long time ago, frankly, by, by the individuals who wrote the charter, or, or enacted the ordinances in place to, to deal with this issue. Because clearly, somewhere between the charter and the, and the ordinances, there should be some procedure for removal of any board.
It needs to be simpit, symbiotical.
To remove board members from other boards, is it a simple three, three, two vote, or it always requires a four vote?
Okay, so to remove board members from other boards, unless you have a specific provision that deals with that specific board, your boards, your, your, and this is the next ordinance that we talked about, board, the, the board members can only be removed if they cease to possess the qualifications for appointment, if, if they're convicted of a crime other than traffic, if they're convicted of violating city ethics ordinances, or they owe the city property taxes. Unless you have a specific ordinance or provision that deals with that specific board, then the only thing that applies is that those, all right? And so the, this, the city, in my opinion, that's, that's a bit of a defect, because this body, however you want to structure it, right, whether it's the mayor's decision or whether it's the city commission's decision, there should be some provision for removal of, of whoever from whatever board.
Right.
Because they, they work for the city commission and they're responsible to the commission. So there should be clearly some procedure that's provided.
I feel, and that's, that's what I want to motion, is that, you know, that with the simple majority of, of this board, that we're able to remove a board member, whether it be the airport board or any other board, right? But in this particular case, we're trying to clean up this ordinance right now with the airport, and if, if, if this board chooses to remove any board member, for whatever reason, we remove them.
All right, well-
Because we're not going to replace them to, to, to do the political way of it. The mayor still has the appointment, right?
Well, unless the charter has changed, but one other point to make here on respects that, with respect to removal, you know, all of these, all these people are volunteers. We ask these people to step up and take, and take on these responsibilities, they're all volunteers, they don't get paid, they're giving of their time, and, you know, this idea, this, this idea of removing people from boards is, is, is pretty harsh. It's a pretty harsh concept. It's a pretty harsh concept to remove any volunteer from any board, and, you know, if you pass these things, you better, you know, it, it would be a real, you know, real harm to, it would chill, it's going to chill people from wanting to serve on boards. If they know the next, next time there's an election, I may get, you know, thrown off the board, I don't want to have, I don't want to have to go through that kind of humiliation because, you know, somebody, you know, got elected that doesn't like me. I mean, it's just, it's going to be some ki, it is going to chill people, it's going to deter people from wanting to volunteer their time to serve on the many boards that we have. So I caution you with regard to that.
But having said that, Mayor-
I do think that we ought to just go ahead and move forward, and, you know, is there, is there a motion on item 11? Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion, second.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
All right, item 12, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading amending Harlingen City Code, Article 7, Board Commissioners and Authorities to repeal Section 2-434 and replace it with a new Section 2-434, amending the manner in which city board members may be removed. Ron Lozano signed up to speak for the, on this item. Please come forward, state your name and your address, you have two minutes.
2410 Riverside, Harlingen. As the mayor just gave a direct quote, that he doesn't back off, it's harsh on any board when someone is removed. And let's just hope he's mad enough to live up to what he said, not only going forward as, right now, he wanted to have that last motion, but just this year. He called this past November, the elections that were held in cities that are larger than Harlingen now, like Edinburgh and Farr. So hopefully, he can hold his word.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
All right, item 13 is consideration and possible action to award a contract for performance auditing services.
Do we need to make a motion to take it off the table, Mayor? Since it was table?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Okay, is there a motion to remove it from the table in a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, would like to sign them. Item's off the table, so consideration and possible action to award a contract for performance auditing services.
So I'd like to see if we could choose a, a service provider that, that can perform this. There's, there's a couple areas that I want to concentrate on. One is Public Works, and the second one is the attorneys, attorney, the previous attorney's billings. And those, those are the two areas I want to start with.
All right, so you're proposing a scope that the, the scope of the performance audit include the Public Works, what, what aspect of the Public Works, Commissioner?
All aspects of Public Works, the whole operation. I'd like to know the ins and outs, how, how we're, how we're, and it's something to discuss with the auditors, whoever we choose, but how we take in, how we account for our inventory, whether it's metal, trash, how we're collecting. I want to know, at the end of the year, if we're, are we transferring funds from Public Works into our, our general fund? Because I understand, you know, certain, when, when, certain on Water Works, that Water Works money was specifically only to be used for Water Works, for watering sewer, right? That's a charge to citizens. I believe it's the same way in Public Works, sanitation and all that, but at the end of the year, I understand we're transferring monies from sanitation, from Public Works into our general fund. I want to know what that is, because if that's what that is, if that's, if that's true, then that's a tax, or that means we're, either we're overbilling, or, or we can redo, we can reduce, you know, what we're charging our citizens. I'd just like to find out what that is, right? How, you know, how are we handling all that, right? For, for us to be billed for the last year and a half, and those are the only bills I got from just our court, that our, our city attorneys were billing us over $50,000 a month for municipal court services, that's a problem.
You want to know if we can transfer sanitation fund balance to the general fund? I don't think you need to have the performance audit to have that question answered.
It's in the budget.
Finance, finance director can answer that question, the city manager can answer that question.
So, so-
I, I mean, no, seriously.
No, but seriously, we need to have better-
Seriously, if you want to know whether or not sanitation fund can be transferred, or you want, if you want to audit the sanitation fund, it's audited every year by the-
Yes, sir, but we've also had-
By our outside auditors.
We've also had complaints about selling scrap metal to companies.
No, 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 that's different.
That's, no, it's not, it's covering our inventory.
No, that's completely different than, you just said, I want to know if it's true, if you can, if you can, if you can, if you can transfer money from the sanitation fund to the general fund. Yes, that's true, it does happen, and, and the city commission approves that every time it's done. So I don't under, so that is completely different than whether or not there's scrap metal being sold. But at any rate, okay, Public Works and attorney's fees that were charged by the outside cap, by our, by our former city attorney, is that what you're going to do?
No, no, there's, there's, it says consideration and possible action to award a contract. So I would like to motion to award a contract to, for performance auditing services to whichever the commission, whichever firms, I believe there was three top, Gabe, if I'm not mistaken.
There were three that made a presentation. Booth-
There were three that made a presentation, Booth, Ernst &amp; Young, and Baker Tilly. The, the company that presented in person was Ernst &amp; Young. The other two were...
So, I, I wanted to, I guess, motion to award a contract with Ernst &amp; Young, that was a top one? What were the two that you just named, I'm sorry?
There were two that were ranked equally, it was Booth and Ernst &amp; Young.
Baker Tilly and Ernst &amp; Young.
Okay, so Ernst &amp; Young, that's my motion.
I'll second.
I prefer Baker Tilly.
Well, we have a motion in a second, so...
Okay, well, there's a motion and a second to award the, to award a contract.
Yeah, I would, I would suggest that the scope be narrowed or specified in terms of...
Well, that's what I was trying to, that's what I was trying to get at, so far, we got Public Works and Attorney, and Attorney's fees, but I didn't really...
Without, without going into specifics, just the areas for purposes of motion.
So, we can start off with, you, you just need, so we can start off with Public Works?
Commissioner, if you want to, if you want to award a contract for a performance audit, I, I would, I would just recommend that you define the scope, I mean, at least generally, in terms of what you want that auditor to look at.
Okay.
And, and without going into any specifics, that would be better discussed in executive session.
So, I'd like to amend, amend his motion then, right? That we award the contract, Ernst &amp; Young, to look at Public Works and its, to look into our, the accounting practices or reconciliation of our books.
For what time periods?
I would say at least the last 10 years.
That's your motion?
And then, and then to look at the last six years of our Attorney's fees with dent in the bottom.
I, I have a question, you said at least 10 years for Public Works.
That's correct.
Is, is, are we going back to the 1990s or 1980s or 1950s?
Going back to where...
At, at least 10 years is not a specific date.
Well, I'd like to go back to where we had investigations of, and accusations of theft at the end.
What investigations and accusations of theft? I don't know anything about that.
I think what he means is the last 10 years, starting from this, from the last fiscal.
Yeah, that would be a lot, that, that scope would be a lot narrower, or if you're trying to go back to this allegation of selling of scrap metal, that would be, that's one thing. If you want to go back, if you're trying to go back for 10 years of Public...
It's much more than scrap metal, it was motors and, and work and fake invoices and phantom checks and tires and...
But you said financial, you said the financial transactions or records for 10, for 10 years.
Exactly, so all, all the POs and everything to get reconciled.
Why don't we go to executive session to discuss the details?
Make that motion, I'll second.
Can we do that?
Okay, there's a motion and a second to go into executive.
You can move into executive session, phrase questions to counsel in terms of the scope of any possible performance audit.
I make a motion to go to executive session.
Like I said.
With regard to what?
A consultation with legal counsel regarding the specifics scope of what's being proposed.
Okay, look, let's go ahead and go into, let's also, let's also go to Item 15, which is executive session pursuant to Section 551.072, Government Code, regarding the purchase and value of property located at 102 T Street for Economic Development and other purposes, and B, consultation with legal counsel pursuant to text of Government Code, Section 551.071, to receive privileged attorney-client communication on confidential matters. Will you amend your motion to include those items so that we can go in, discuss all three of them instead of coming out?
Can we address the, the item 13 first?
Commissioner Penis indicated he amend, he amends the motion to include those. Is there a second, or who seconded it earlier? You seconded it, you accept these, you accept the amendment?
Yes.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go into executive session, discuss these matters with our attorneys, we will come back, and there should be action on at least one or two of these items, thank you. Okay, so we're going to go back to Item 13, there was a motion and a second, I think we need, Commissioner, you want to amend your mo...
Yeah, so we'll just...
amend your motion.
I wanted to make a motion, or amend the motion to allow Gabe to negotiate and...
Scope of work, excuse me.
Negotiate the scope of work and, and fees, and then come back to the Commission for...
We have to identify the firm that you want me to...
Ernst &amp; Young.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Okay, whoever, so you, did you second it the first time, did you second the first motion?
He amended mine.
No, I'm asking, who, who seconded the first motion?
Renee.
Second. I'll second again.
Okay, we'll just accept it, you'll accept...
Oh, I accept it, yes.
You'll accept the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, so, so the motion's been amended and the, and the second's accepted it, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Item 15, Item 16, rather, discussion, possible consideration to approve Item 15A is discussed in executive session, is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the motion carries, and that concludes...
Board appointments?
All of the items on our agenda, so we are adjourned.
We need Board appointments, we need Board appointments.
All right, in fact, we're not adjourned. Board appointments, we have Item 14, Board appointments.
I have none.
I, I have one, Marcus Cruz to the P&amp;Z Board, Planning and Zoning, I'm sorry.
I have two, I would like to Maru De La Paz to Healthy Harlingen and Norma Sepulveda to the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee.
I'm sorry, who was it?
Norma Sepulveda.
And the first one?
Maru De La Paz.
Okay, Maru De La Paz to...
Healthy Harlingen.
Okay, all, is there a motion to approve the Board appointments?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries, okay, now, I believe that concludes all of our items, we are adjourned. Thank you, bye.